Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Yes. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council meeting notice dated February 11th, 2021, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Thank you. And could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little. Mr. Naidoo.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
President.
President Fox. Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I think we don't have the chief's flag. Let me see. I have like a little flag here, so we'll do this. Good. So I pledge-
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
Of the United-
-of the United States of America.
And to the Republic-
To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Madam Clerk, could you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments?
Yes. A closed-session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed-session agenda. Please be advised, the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also being streamed live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated February 11th, 2021, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. The City Clerk's Office also provided through public notice instructions on how the public could submit a question or comment via email or regular first-class mail in advance of the meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specified times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a public comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Lastly, we ask that all participants remain on mute unless called upon to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So tonight, we're going to go a little bit out of order because we have a resolution to appoint a new council member. So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President Fox. I am introducing the Resolution ID Number 7665, which will appoint a council member for Ward 2 and transfer all of the 2021 Committee and Liaison Assignments. And this resolution is in response to our council member, Stephen Bowman, who advised council that he was moving out of the state of New Jersey and thus submitted a resignation. And the council has voted to appoint a new council member for Ward 2, and it took place at our closed meeting, the vote. So I'm introducing that resolution.
Okay, I'll second that. So should we, at this point, we should be saying who that is we're voting?
Okay.
Yes.
I apologize. So I am very pleased to introduce our newest council member, Lisa Allen, to our Summit Common Council.
So first of all, we do need to take a vote on it because we don't actually vote in closed session. So I'll second that. And all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? Okay, good. So welcome. Motion carries. Welcome, Lisa. We are so pleased to have you. And now, we are going to have the mayor swear you in on Zoom. So this is a first, I think.
Yes, it is. Well, congratulations and welcome, Lisa. And I'm happy to see your husband and your boys with you. So we'll have a, when we're all back in session, we can do a nice formal big group hug. So if you want to use your Bible, then you put your right hand on the Bible, but you do not need to raise your other hand. Okay?
All right.
Okay. Just repeat after me. I, Lisa K. Allen-
I, Lisa K. Allen-
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey-
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey-
And that I will bear true faith-
And that I will bear true faith-
And allegiance-
And allegiance-
To the same-
To the same-
And to the governments established-
And to the governments established-
In the United States-
In the United States-
And in this state-
And in this state-
Under the authority of the people-
Under the authority of the people.
I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
That I will faithfully-
That I will faithfully-
Impartially-
Impartially-
And justly-
And justly-
Perform all the duties-
Perform all the duties-
Of the office of Councilmember Ward 2-
Of the council member, council office, wait, say that again?
Of the, that's all right. Of the office-
Of the office of Ward 2.
Of Councilmember Ward 2.
Councilmember Ward 2.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you. Thanks. What to do? Sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is, it's much easier to do this. We're all facing each other and we can have eye contact. So this is very strange, strange world. And I particularly am grateful to you for stepping up and being willing to serve in the midst of this quite a tumultuous time in our history. So thank you very much, Lisa. And thank you, your family, for sharing her because you will be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Yeah.
Congratulations, Councilmember Allen. So I know you had a few words that you wanted to say, so I'll turn it over to you briefly.
All right. Thank you so much. I just wanted to thank the council for your vote of confidence and support in me tonight. I do want to say goodbye to Steve Bowman, who I'm taking the mantle from. I'm very grateful. And I've been a Summit resident for almost 12 years. I've watched a lot of these meetings. So it is absolutely an honor to be with this, working with this distinguished group and being on the other side of the dais tonight. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So now you can take your seat and participate in the meeting. And your family can tune in on TV if they want and watch your first meeting.
Or not. Or not. Oh, they will.
So, all right. So when we're on to the main business of meetings, so the first thing is the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular and closed-session minutes of February 2nd?
No.
2nd?
2nd.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And so for this one, I think, Councilmember Allen, you probably want to abstain because you weren't at that meeting. Correct?
Correct. I'll abstain, Council President.
Okay, great. And now we're on to reports. And Madam Mayor, it's your report first.
Thank you, Council President Fox. So we have talked about last time that the community center would be the place for vaccinations, for COVID vaccinations. The Vaccination Center, run by Atlantic Health System at the Summit Community Center, has been up and running since Monday, February 8th. As vaccine supply increases, Atlantic Health will be able to schedule appointments for eligible patients. Last week, 1,084 people were vaccinated at the community center site. This week, they are on track to vaccinate approximately 2,500 people. And we are confident that that number will continue to increase. Now, of course, the weather tomorrow may be a problem, but we'll see. Beginning today, Department of Community Programs staff has transported senior housing residents at 12 Chestnut Street to receive their vaccinations. I am thankful to the DCP for their assistance with getting some of our most vulnerable residents to their appointments. If you have not already done so, please register for a vaccine with the state of New Jersey at covid19 nj.gov. Register with Union County at ucnj.org. Register with Atlantic Health at atlantichealth.org. And you can register with CBS, Rite Aid, and ShopRite. Links to those three sites are available on the city website at cityofsummit.org/vaccine. I want to thank again our partners at Atlantic Health for working with us to have this partnership in Summit for our residents and people in the community, in the area, and not just Summit residents. And the only other thing I have, which I'm very, very excited about, is the Volunteer Service Award. It's an annual award we started three years ago. And at the March 2 meeting, Common Council and I will be recognizing the Reverend Dr. Dennison Harriold with our annual volunteer award for his decades of dedicated service to the Summit community. I am very pleased that Reverend Harriold has been chosen as the recipient for this award and so thankful for his good work, wise counsel, and frequent participation in the life of our community. On the 2nd, I will have a lot more to say about him. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to the city administrator for his report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. So it looks like the forecast is holding and more inclement weather with several inches of snow is on the way for Thursday, I think, and into Friday. The Division of Public Works has been preparing for the last 24 hours, readying equipment and brining city streets. A reminder pursuant to municipal ordinance, sidewalks must be cleared within 24 hours of a winter storm event. Snow guidelines are posted on the city website at cityofsummit.org with information on plowing priorities, garbage collection, and more. On Monday, March 1st, Summit Police Department will begin using the Frontline Overnight Parking Tool, a secure database that allows residents to log into a specific website to provide overnight parked vehicle information to local law enforcement officials. Once launched, a link to and information on this new tool will be available at cityofsummit.org. And lastly, beginning on Monday, February 22nd, Summit Police Department will begin accepting applications for an anticipated opening for a police officer. So please go to cityofsummit.org/jobs for more information. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for the Council President's report. The Silver Summit Senior Citizens Advisory Committee is seeking volunteers to help identify, develop, and implement senior-focused programs, resources, and services in Summit. Summit residents 18 years of age or older may apply. This is a remote position for now. We'll be working remotely. And it has a time commitment of approximately five hours each month, although volunteer hours may fluctuate depending on the current projects. Subcommittee meetings will be held virtually using Zoom once a month or as needed. For more information or to apply, go to cityofsummit.org. The Union County Board of Commissioners will hold a drive-up food distribution event for Union County residents to aid those affected by COVID-19 on Saturday, February 20th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Union County Vocational Technical Schools parking lot, located at 1776 Raritan Road in Scotch Plains. The food distribution is open to all Union County residents. Food will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis and no registration is required. The event will take place rain or shine. And finally, Black History Month. To celebrate Black History Month, Union County is hosting a free performance of an interview with Bessie Coleman, an exploration of the life and times of the first African-American woman to become a licensed airplane pilot and the first American to hold an international pilot's license. The performance will be streamed live on Facebook and Zoom on Tuesday, February 23rd at 7:00 p.m. To view on Facebook, visit the Union County Facebook page at facebook.com/unioncounty, oh, county of Union, sorry. To view on Zoom, pre-registration is required. For more information, you can go to ucnj.org. And so I think that's actually a very good segue into our presentation. We have a Black History Month presentation from students from Kent Place School. Madam Clerk, do we have our presenter here?
Madam President, I do not recognize if Ms. Justice is, has joined us unless she's using another name. I have reached out to her and she has not responded, so I would-
Public comments and come back?
I would, yeah. I would suggest we move on and then have her join us when she's here.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Madam. So with that, we will open, at this point in the meeting, we'll open the floor for public comments. We will take comments on issues that are not topics on tonight's agenda. And whenever you read from a prepared statement, please provide that statement to the clerk at our licitise@cityofsummit.org. And to help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit everyone to be heard, we ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes. And when I recognize you, you can raise your hand. And when I recognize you, I ask that you state your name and your address. So we'll go to the first commenter. Mr. Bennett, go ahead. You can unmute yourself.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Council President. Good evening, Mayor Rades, members of council. I'm Jim Bennett, B-E-N-N-E-T-T, 38 Fairview Avenue. Let me start by congratulating Lisa Allen on her appointment to fill the vacancy on council created by Steve Bowman's departure. I also thank Steve Bowman for his service to the community. Christine and I wish Steve, Karen, and Brianna the best in Dallas, where they're moving for business reasons. I return now to my recurrent theme, energy security. I continue to believe that the solution for unacceptable power outage is to put utility lines underground, even if that seems a bridge too far for most people here. The figure-to-bury lines you heard from Ms. Carol Bianchi of JCPN on November 4th, 2020 is overstated. I have that on authority from sources in Germany, where, if anywhere, the cost to put cables underground would be higher. Four of the nine members of the public who spoke at a January 29th, 2021 meeting of the Board of Public Utilities concurred with me about putting cables underground. But having said that, there is consensus about a stop-gap fix, more aggressive vegetation management. Notably, seven of the 12 slides in Ms. Bianchi's presentation were either referred to trees or showed trees in photographs. Almost the entire restoration effort from Izaeus involved repairs from tree damage or removal of tree limbs. To address the tree problems systematically, I submitted in early December a proposed ordinance. The City Clerk advised me it would go to the Capitol Projects and Community Services Committee. The highlights of the proposed ordinance, to the extent these steps are not already being implemented, are: One, development of vegetation standards. Two, mapping the city for utility lines. Three, segmenting utility lines according to lines on the JCPNL right-of-way, city property, and private property. Four, identifying vegetation hazards. And five, responding to vegetation hazards according to the segment in which the hazard lies. I would like to thank Aaron Schreger, who has been going through the proposal and who has been responsive to status inquiries. If the proposal is adopted, in whatever form and to whatever extent, Summit will be doing its part for energy security. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Bennett. Moving on, do we have any other comments? Ryan Felmitz, go ahead, Mr. Felmitz.
Hello. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on our previous ongoing discussions that we've had regarding the Bristol-Myers Squibb noise pollution. We recently had, there was recently a planning board meeting on the subject of building, construction of a new building and demolition, the S3 building. So I had two questions related to the ongoing noise issue. One is, is there any updates in your discussions with Bristol-Myers Squibb management or any other parties in terms of mitigating the current noise issues? And then, as a group, but I'll ask the question. In terms of the planning board process, we were unclear on whether prior resolutions related to the master plan for a given project, it seemed that they cannot be referenced during the process. So if someone could comment on that or guide us to the right person or body that would be able to explain the ability to use, comment or ask questions on prior resolutions relating to a master plan of projects. So that and an update would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felmitz. I don't have any update. Mayor, do you have an update on discussions?
I don't have an update on discussions because we're not having them. They are, they have ordered and have contracted for the two improvements. One, for the baffles around the, on the roof of F7, to change them and improve them to deflect noise. And the other, to replace another piece of machinery on the roof also of S7. Those pieces of equipment have been ordered and they are waiting for them. The last I spoke, frankly, was about a week ago. They are waiting for those machinery to get there. And then, needless to say, I'm sure you've heard, Mr. Felmitz, throughout the country, there are shipping issues because of COVID. But they are waiting for that equipment and as soon as it arrives and they can, they will install them. So that is what I know thus far regarding the improvements that they are committed to and that we discussed on that Saturday night meeting several weeks ago.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In answer to your second question, we are seeking guidance on the interrelatedness of the GDP, the General Development Plan, and the S3 application. That's currently before the Board. So at this point, we really cannot give you any guidance on that.
Great. Thank you both.
Welcome. Thank you for your comment. Moving on, Mr. Fishman, go ahead.
Hi. Thank you, Madam Chairman and Madam Mayor. On the same topic of the BMS noise-
Mr. Fishman, can you just state your address, please?
34 Webster Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
On the same topic of noise pollution, about Bristol-Myers Squibb and in town in general, well, we're very pleased that the town is taking action and interest in enforcing the noise policy regarding Bristol-Myers Squibb. Out of curiosity, well, I've lived here 13 years and I've noticed the town's just getting noisier and noisier. And so have many of my neighbors. And I was just kind of curious how well or how often the noise policy is being enforced. So I happened to do an Oprah request and the result was surprising. I would like to share with the council that during the past three years, the town has only issued one, that's one summons for a violation of the noise policy, while certainly people are complaining about excessive noise all the time. And to me, this indicates two things. One is the gravity and the extraordinary nature of the BMS noise issue. And again, I thank the council and the mayor for addressing it proactively. And secondly, that the BMS noise did not get out of hand in a vacuum. And I, on behalf of many neighbors, hope this sets a nice precedent for the town starting to enforce the noise ordinance and improve the quality of life for many citizens. And I know I'm limited to three minutes. I just want to add one more thing here. In the planning board meeting last week, the planning board, who seems likely to approve the application by Bristol-Myers Squibb, they repeatedly said they are not an enforcement body. And with that statement, they assumed that an enforcement regime did exist. Now, it appears that one is being created for Bristol-Myers Squibb. And I applaud the council and hope that the noise enforcement is regular and ongoing because they violated that policy so many times. I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Fishman. We share your concerns and we are, you know, we are looking into this. And, you know, hopefully, there will be, hopefully, we'll be able to reach some kind of resolution that meets everyone's needs. But any other comments from members of the public? Okay. So with that, I'm going to close the public comment period. And we'll move, we're going to go back and do our presentation for Black History Month. And we have, we'll lead a justice from the, from Kent Place School, who will be doing a presentation, I believe, with some of her students. So welcome and thank you so much for coming tonight. I think you need to unmute.
I do. Thank you so much for having me. It is good to see all of you and I thank you for coming back to this part of the program. I am Wilita Justice. I am the Kent Place School Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. And our school is a school that is trying very hard to be as inclusive as possible. We've been doing that for a couple of years. And I think we've taken some steps in this past year to be more inclusive. So part of that is trying to find ways to have cultural celebrations that include the entire community. So that is students, faculty, staff, as well as parents. And one of the ways that we do that is through our Diversity, Equity Parent Group. That particular group at our school for the last three years has been doing cultural celebrations. And generally, they do an annual Black History Month celebration of some sort. Because we are virtual this year, we've had to alter some of the programming. So this year, some of the offerings that they had were some movie nights, specifically a movie night. One was Hidden Figures. The other was The Princess and the Frog. And then in the upcoming weeks, they will have The Hate U Give, also with a panel discussion. So those were some of the events that they had. In addition, our upper school students that are part of our Black Cultural Association, every year, they do a BCA forum. That particular forum itself is usually based on a certain topic. So this year, our first week of Black History Month in February was Black Lives Matter Week. So they decided to make the topic of their actual forum a focus on Black Lives Matter as a global movement. The other group that I wanted to mention to all of you is in our primary school. It's one of our primary school affinity groups. And it's an affinity group the school's had for almost 20 years. It is called Kaleidoscopes. And I want to show you the video that our students had from Kaleidoscope. So let me get that for you. Give me one second so I can. And I think I have access to share my screen already. So let me bear with me for one moment. Our Kaleidoscopes group would represent students that are in our preschool through fifth grade. And let's see. And, oops. Make sure that I share sound. And these students want to give you a sense of what this group does. I would say that this is our affinity group in our primary school.
I would like to share about Kaleidoscopes at Kent Place School. Kaleidoscopes is an affinity group which began in 2006 for the primary school students of color. It is also open to students who wish to engage in social justice conversations. This program also expands to middle school and the upper school students who participate as mentors. Kaleidoscope's goal is to affirm and empower students of the same or similar identities, to celebrate diversity through activities and conversations, to equip students with tools to challenge prejudice.
Hi. My name is Skylar and I've been participating in Kaleidoscopes for five years since I was in kindergarten. Kaleidoscopes is every month after school. We usually start by reading a special book, doing an activity, and listening to some music. One of Kaleidoscope's favorites is No Mirrors in My Nana's House, about how Nana's house is magical because there are no judgments about skin color, beauty, or poverty.
Every spin of a kaleidoscope creates one unique and beautiful shape made out of- Every spin of a kaleidoscope creates one unique and beautiful shape made out of many individual pieces. The individual is not consumed by the whole. Each piece remains as an integral part of the final shape.
Sorry about that. And so that represented our lower school affinity group. That is our longest standing affinity group and we have started affinity groups in our middle school and upper school. And I wanted to show you one more thing on the screen. Give me one more second. And we actually had. So this year, we encouraged our teachers to come with some different lesson plans that they could use to incorporate black history. And I wanted to highlight one of the teachers for you. This particular teacher is the head of our PE department as well as our health and wellness department. And what she created that would be used with our students specifically in the middle school and the upper school was a real hero bingo. Share my screen again. Thanks for your patience. So what she was able to create. My apologies. Come back up. So she created a bingo game that our students can play as part of their PE lesson. And as you go through each of them, I apologize that my computer is moving slowly. She talked about the history of Black History Month. And then as you go through each of the slides, what she created was a fitness bingo. And she based it off of different African Americans in history who are famous athletes. Some of them are Olympians and what she encouraged the students to do. I'm going to turn down the sound on that one was to create a fitness sort of plan for themselves during the course of their PE course that would be based on exercises that different black Americans would do. So for example, Jesse Owens with fast speed. There's a couple of different people, Jackie Robinson, Arthur Ashe. But the goal was to get her students to learn black history as they were exercising. And it turned out very nicely. And this was something that was shared with students and families. So anyone could participate in that. The last thing I wanted to say to all of you is as a school community, Ken Place has been trying very hard to make students of all different cultures visible. And part of how we do that is through the different celebrations that we had in the past. One of the guest speakers at our Black History Month was Susan Hairston. And that was especially when we were very focused on black people in the vote. This year, we're focused on the black family and we are creating a video that our black families are participating in so that they can share sort of their traditions during Black History Month and what they feel is important and affirming about being black. So there's a lot of different opportunities that we have. We do have a guest speaker next week. Her name is Dr. Crystal Lucky. She's the Associate Dean at Villanova University and her content area is English and African American Studies. So that program is next Wednesday evening at seven o'clock and that is open to the public. So with that, I would like to say to all of you, I thank you for the opportunity to be here. And Ken Place is very excited and our students were very excited to be a part of this. I apologize that they were not actually able to be here, some of them in actual visibility with me. But they're doing some great work and I hope that what we showcased gives you a little better sense of what we do. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Willita. That was really interesting.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. We appreciate you're taking the time to do this presentation and to tell us about all the wonderful things going on at Ken Place. And it really was great seeing the Kaleidoscope group. They're really so well, so well spoken and so, so poised and, and just clearly they're enthusiastic about what's going on in Kaleidoscope. And so thank you for sharing that. So. And I, I hope that you will, you know, next time come back with your students and tell us more about what you've been up to. So thank you.
Happy to. Thank you so very much.
Okay, so we are now moving on to, unless anyone had any comments or questions for Ms. Justice. So, so we will move on now to resolutions to the regular part of the agenda. And we're going to start out, we have a number of capital projects resolutions, which council member and I do will take tonight. So would you like to get started?
Thank you, Council President. In the absence of Councilwoman Little, I will try to do my best, but I'm sure I'm no substitute for Beth. So we will start off with seven, seven, six, six, four, which as per our close, close session discussion concerns a letter of intent with regard to the post office. As part of the Broad Street redevelopment project, the city has approached the US Postal Service about the possibility of purchasing their property in Summit on Maple Avenue and relocating it in Summit to another location in Summit. And so this way it's very clear to folks, just in case they're listening, that we are not going to be without a post office. We will continue to have a post office. This letter of intent allows for the two parties to discuss and review the relocation alternatives. This document will be posted on the city's redevelopment page. Once assuming that it's approved tonight. And you will notice that there is an escrow fund in this document, but that fund is going to be funded by the redeveloper. With that background, I'd like to introduce this resolution.
I'll second that. Are there any comments from, or questions from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay. Yeah, I abstain.
Thank you. So the motion carries and we'll move on to capital projects number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution seven, six, six, seven, which is to disband the transfer station task force. As folks will recall, back in 2018, we formed a task force and we had residents, volunteers who gave of their time and we thanked them for their time that were involved in studying the possible options and uses for the transfer station property. And we can now disband this task force because they have come up with a report. The overall report for those interested in knowing what their set of recommendations is. And this, folks have to understand when these volunteers worked with the city, worked very hard, had multiple meetings. Myself and former council member Steve Bowman were assigned to them, but as, as council liaison, but it was really these folks who did all the work. They looked into the different options, but they also had to look at the current conditions of the property, which includes wetlands. It includes the fact that we want to continue transfer station operations. But most importantly, and something that we did not know until work was done, is that there's the potential habitat for and maybe the presence of an endangered species, which significantly reduces the different options available there. So therefore, based upon that, they came up with a certain set of recommendations, including how to reduce debris, improve trails, potentially put in a pollinator area, put in potentially other less intensive uses that could be used. But there are certain restrictions to what that property can be used for. But one of the good things that it can be used for is the continued recycling operations. And with that, I'd like to introduce this resolution.
I second it. Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Barton.
Thank you, Council President. I want to join council member Naidu in thanking the members of the transfer station task force for their time on this. While the task force's report closes the door on some things, it leaves the door open on other things. Those other things could include things like a dog park potentially. But also I think, and more in line with the function that's already there, is composting. And I think we can and we should continue to vigorously pursue options related to how we can increase composting at the transfer station. So thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Councilmember Barton. I want to just clarify, when we say composting, we're talking about vegetative waste composting. I, I don't want to create any expectations that we're going to be doing food composting with our current operations. That would, that's something that we would be unlikely to be able to get a permit for unless it was a closed vessel composter. And that, that may be sometime in our future, but not immediately. So are there any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, so hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
Okay. Councilmember Allen, would, or would you like to abstain for, for all of the items on the agenda tonight or?
Yes, Count.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. Since you weren't part of the discussion, so that might be easy. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll move on then to, to the motion carries. So we'll move on to capital projects number three. Councilmember Naidu.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution seven, six, six, four. This is one of those happy resolutions, which is that we've saved some money. The contractor asphalt paving systems, which did some micro paving, completed their project in 2020. And as a result of final accounting, had a small savings for the city of about $1,700. And with that, I'd like to introduce this resolution.
And I second it. Any comments from members of council? So I'm just going to say, and since council member Bowman isn't here to say it and he's the big fan, he was a big fan of micro paving. And this is a project we do annually and it's something where we coat the streets and it with a, a compound that extends the life of our streets, which is, which increases their lifespan, which saves us a lot of money because repaving streets is expensive. So it's a great program. And in this case, what, what ends up happening is at the end, we, when the measurements are off a little bit, we, you know, in good years, we get money back. So this is one of those years. So anyway, so with that, are there any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Was that an aye, councilmember Barton? Yep, delayed. Okay. And all right. Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we'll move on to capital projects number four.
Sorry. Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution seven, six, six, zero, which is a closed session item. So as per our closest session discussion, this is to declare a vacancy for sanitation truck driver. An employee has, the employee that had filled the position has taken another full-time position. And of course, this is an essential service because we obviously use both the sanitation trucks, not only for picking up sanitation, but also during slump for snow work. And with that, I'd like to introduce this resolution.
And I second it. Any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And our last capital projects resolution is capital projects number five. Councilmember Naidu.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution seven, six, six, eight, which is also a closed session items. And as per our closed session discussion, this is to declare a vacancy for part-time position assistant for the Department of Community Services. We had previously declared a vacancy in this position in the fall. We had filled the position. But the person who filled it has decided to do something else instead. And so the vacancy has reappeared and we're now just simply posting for that same position. With that, I'd like to introduce this resolution.
And I second that. Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on to safety and health. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I am introducing Resolution number seven, six, six, three, which is also an item per our close session. And that is to declare a vacancy in the fire department. And this opening is for a firefighter at level, at firefighter level rank due to the upcoming retirement of firefighter. Ooh, that's a tongue twister here. Firefighter Richard Staggerd, who twenty-six-year veteran in the Summit Fire Department. And we wish him very well on his retirement. A list of eligible firefighters candidates at the probationary level has been established and to ensure adequate staffing levels and to minimize overtime expect expenses. And so we expect to fill this vacancy no later than April fourth. So I introduce this resolution.
A second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And our last resolution is a law and labor matter. Councilmember Hairston.
Okay, Councilmember Allen, I'm doing this on your behalf. And you'll be doing these going forward, introducing Resolution number seven, six, eight, two, which is to authorize extension of sick leave with pay for a fire department employee. And so we are asking for this extension to be granted for sick leave pay through April twenty-seventh, 2021.
And I second that. Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and we wish this employee a speedy recovery. And with that, we're moving on to the consent agenda. So the consent agenda, unless anyone has anything they want to pull out to discuss, is voted on as a whole. So I don't hear anything. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So.
Okay, and a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now we have one last item. It's an item for discussion, action or referral. Councilmember Naidu.
Thank you, Council President. This is the Affordable Housing Report. This is done annually. So pursuant to the city settlement agreement with the fair share housing, the city's affordable house, the city's affordable housing liaison, Matt Delory, has prepared an annual affordable housing update report. The report was shared with the Affordable Housing Committee on February third and is available on the city's website. The highlights I'll share with you are the following. Twelve affordable housing units were added to the city's affordable housing stock, including eight units at the new Sunrise facility on River Road. A settlement was reached with Habitat for the project on Ashwood and Morris, which will result in an additional 12 new units. Rehabilitation funds were used to replace the stairways and windows at the Glenwood Apartments. And affordability assistance was set aside to maintain the two new units at Russell Place. In summary, the city is continuing to make significant progress towards the 50-unit goal specified in the settlement agreement. Matt, who has taken on this position and done frankly, an excellent job of organizing the information dealing with affordable housing obligations and where we stand, is available for any further comments. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidu. So in addition, it's, this, this plan is also attached to the, the agenda. So you can find it online on the council agenda as well. And thank you, Matt, for the work, excellent work that you've done on this. I'll open it up in case, first of all, to council members if anyone has any questions on the report. Okay, it's, I think it's extremely self-explanatory and very clear. So are there any questions from members of the public? Okay, so seeing none, I think, I think we've covered that. Thank you so much for your work on all of this. And with that, we'll move on to item, let's see, I guess it's council members' comments. item, let's see, I guess it's council members' comments and new business. Does anyone have any comments or things they'd like to say? Councilmember Naidu.
Thank you very much, Council President. First of all, welcome Lisa to council. It's great to have you. I hope you have a great time being on council. But I'd also like to wish a happy Chinese New Year. Between our last council meeting and this council meeting was Chinese New Year. And typically, as in the years past, we know the Summit Chinese Association does a great celebration where members of council, the mayor are all invited along with the public. And this year, of course, with COVID could not happen. But hopefully next year we can have a celebration. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidu. If I had thought of it, I would have shared that picture of the performer who was cracking eggs over your head last.
With a plate over my head, just balancing, yes.
Exactly. It was memorable. So any other comments from Mayor?
Add that, and thank you, David, for reminding me. But the Summit Chinese American Association, they did put a lot of time and effort into a virtual celebration. And it was, was hard to pull together, but they, they did. And they were, they're anxious to help and do something with everybody in the, together in the, in the future. But I do want to point out the one thing that this, that that organization in the last year has done a lot to self-support Summit. They raised over $7,000 to, to give to various hospitals in the, in our area. They collected, they purchased, they raised the money and then purchased thousands of face masks that they distributed, which we gave to us, to the city, and then we gave to, you know, Bridges, Grace Pantry and many other locations in town. So they have been a really great group of people. And five years ago, I talked about the first time that I went to their association celebration in the Chinese New Year, I talked about the importance of volunteering in Summit and how it helps, that's what the community is about and how it really helps you get to know your neighbors and, and understand how our community works. And boy, have they stepped up to the plate. So I really applaud them and they have, they're really a big fabric, part of the fabric of our community. So I'm grateful to them.
Thank you, Mayor. We look forward to celebrating with them again next year in person.
Yes.
Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Administrator Rogers and Mark Ozarowski and the mayor for the Herculean efforts at getting the community center opened for the COVID vaccine. People don't know all of the work that goes into orchestrating a public health effort like that. And I know we're, you know, at the beginning of this effort and there's a supply shortage. But this cannot go without recognition that this is a pretty big deal. And I just want to, you know, thank each of them and Overlook Hospital, as Nora said. And just ask everybody to be patient, get registered. This is a big deal. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, so with that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Good night, everyone. Stay safe, stay healthy. Thanks so much and welcome to Councilmember Allen.
Welcome, Councilmember.
Thank you, everybody. I'm really happy to be a part of the team.
And we're looking forward to working with you.
You too, very much.
Stay out of the snow, everybody.
Tomorrow.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.